Good. Call to order, eighteenth regular meeting of the Lynn City Council. Madam Clerk will call.
Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present. Counsel Cahill?
Present.
Present. Counsel Capano?
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakoudas?
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Present. Counsel Sia?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lozey?
Present.
Present. Counsel Annett?
Present.
Present. Counsel Trahan?
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present. Eleven? Present.
May we rise for a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance.
President, I'd like to dedicate this moment of silence to the memory of Judge Plata.
Mr. President, also a moment of silence for the Aberdanyan family, Mike Aberdany.
Leading us off in our pledge of allegiance is our future city councillor, Owen Lapierre. Owen, would you like to start us off?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Owen, one day you'll be here, and so will Rich Calucci. I have a motion to accept the minutes for the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen meeting. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor who say I oppose, know the answer. Communications.
We have no communications.
We have no communications. Public hearing.
Public hearing. First petition of National Grid, Chris Radzik, for permission to install two-to-four-inch PVC conduit from pole number one to property at one-twenty-four Boston Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Hi, good evening. John Jankowski, one-seventy Medford Street in Malden, Mass., representing National Grid. The petition that you have in front of you, we're to provide service, I believe it's Taco Bell. To do that, we have to provide probably five feet of PVC conduit from an existing pole, pole number one, to the property line. And the road itself will not be disturbed, just the sidewalk itself will be disturbed. Any questions? I'll happily answer them.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I'm going to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I'm going to open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone opposed to the National Grid's request to install PVC conduit to the Taco Bell? If you'd like to come to the podium and speak, or I can just take a display of hands. Hello, could you please state your name and your address for the record?
Gertrude Sally Chapman, one-nine-six Locust Street, Stadium Condos. We're in a butt-ative project, and yet again, we're in the dark is what's going on. I assume that when they're talking PVC pipe, they're talking digging in the ground, of which they told us last May there would be no digging. They've already dug in the street, they were down six feet. Plenty of water down there, but they're telling us they haven't disturbed the brook. They're doing all sorts of trench work on the property itself, and yet nobody knows what's going on, or where it's going, or what's happening, and what it's affecting, or whatever. But at this point, not having the information, we've never seen a site plan, we've never seen any of the specifications as to how far down they're going, or how long it's going to take. And at this point, not having the information that we need, I'm opposed to this project.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If you don't wish to speak in opposition, but want to show your opposition by a show of raising your hands, if anyone's opposed, you can raise your hand. May the record reflect that there are four individuals in the audience in opposition. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, to close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, to close the public hearing. Counsel Chakoudas?
Well, I know everyone, there's few people, they are opposed to it, but I am going to have to grant them permission for this because the building was approved, and they're going to have to have National Grid hook everything up. But as usual, you're doing the sidewalk, not the street, you said?
Sure.
That is correct, just the sidewalk.
And you're going to put the sidewalk back in better shape than it was in?
That is correct.
Correct? And it's going to be the concrete? Is that concrete over there?
I think it is concrete, I'm not positive.
All right, so it's going to be the concrete, correct? All right.
Mr. President.
Counsel Lozey?
And I just want to point out, you do contact DigSafe prior to putting a shovel in the ground.
Of course.
Which demonstrates that there are no utilities or pipe work in any, in the vicinity of where you're digging, and that you do provide them with the plans, and they are the jurisdictional body that oversees any digging in the city, whether it's National Grid, Comcast, TPW, anybody. And that's correct, right?
Yep, that's correct.
And just for the record, there is a brook, Stacy Brook, that passes underneath that plaza. Do you know how far away you're digging from that?
I don't know. It's probably about five feet on a public property, but on the private property, I'm not positive. I would say maybe thirty feet, but I'm not positive about that.
But you know you're not, obviously not digging over that pipe.
Well, we'll probably go maybe thirty, minimum thirty inches, but thirty-four inches is max.
Is the depth of the dig?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not deep?
Oh, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Lapierre?
I just want to be clear on the repair work that you'll do after you're done. Is it along the Stetson Street side and the Boston Street side?
It should be on the Stet-
Or primarily on Stetson?
Just Stetson Street.
Stetson Street side?
That's it.
And that's where the new sidewalks will be as well?
Yep.
Will that be the whole length from the entrance of the out-to?
It's kind of up to the developer as to how far they're doing on Stetson Street side. But where we dig, it'll be replaced at.
Okay. Because you'll probably have some walking traffic to the restaurant, so you'll want to make sure that's safe and redone. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Do you know the questions? Counsel Chakoudas has made a motion?
Motion to approve.
And I'll second that with the usual stipulations.
With those stipulations, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano? Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey? Yes. Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Eleven? Yes.
Counsel Sia?
Next petition, petition of BWBC One LLC Attorney James Moore for Nicholas Menino for permission to allow City of Lynn licensed mobile food vehicles to operate at Unit eighteen-one-eighty Commercial Street, seven days a week, Monday through Friday, three p.m. to eight p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, twelve noon to eight p.m.
Those wishing to speak in favor? State your name and your address, please.
My name is James Moore. I'm an attorney at law. I practice at eighty-five Exchange Street in Lynn, Massachusetts. And I'm here representing Betwater Brewing Management Company, LLC. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the brewery. We have a representative from Betwater here today if you have detailed questions about it. But I'm just a fellow who prepared the petition. I think it might be your first to allow City of Lynn licensed mobile food vehicles to operate at this location. That's what the petition's for. Any questions for me?
No questions?
Thank you.
Why don't you sit close by, Mr. Moore? Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to get up and speak in favor?
Hi, my name's Chris Crawford. I'm one of the founders of Betwater Brewing Company. Our state-issued farmer's brewer's permit currently does not allow us to produce food on-premise, so we've unfortunately have not been able to offer that to our patrons. So food trucks would, in theory, allow us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to get up and speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to get up in opposition? Anyone wishing to get up and speak in opposition? Are you in favor, Jeff, or in opposition?
I'm in favor of him as a person respectfully, in Latin, but that's about as much as I'm able to say about it because he's an elder, and we should respect our future and make sure that they know.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In opposition, I mean, I'm sorry. Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What's the wish of the counsel?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Counsel Capano? Motion to approve, seconded. Roll call. Mr. President, Vice President. This, I just had a question. This, we have been denying food trucks for a while now in the city, and I know that this is not going to be the type of food truck that we were denying the application for. Are there any conditions on this, or are we going to just allow any food truck into the City of Lynn now? Actually, as a point of information, we're not, we passed an ordinance back, I believe it was in late August, early September, for food trucks. This was one of the reasons that we passed it, was to allow food trucks. They're going to be inspected by Inspeccional Services. They also, I believe, have to go in front of the licensing, don't they? So we're opening the way for food trucks now? Mr. Lamanna?
On private property.
On private property. Only on private property?
This is a first for me. I do not believe you have to go through the license, the licensing board. This is per the ordinance, this body can issue a special permit on private property, and that was a recommendation of Inspeccional Services, to at least have you the opportunity to consider. They're not changing the premises in any way, so I do not envision them going before the licensing board.
Counsel Capano?
Yes, I'm very familiar with this. Obviously, very successful business in Lynn, and I was going to say that. I thought, you know, with our new ordinance, that, you know, that's all they would need would be for them to be able to come here. There are stipulations, seven days a week, Monday to Friday, three p.m. to eight p.m., and Saturday and Sunday from twelve to eight. It's on private property. You know, it just fits what they're trying to do down there. You know, it's about time, you know, we, you know, the food trucks are coming here. This is the type of place where this would actually work out very well. I don't see a problem, especially with their location and their reputation. So, you know, I don't see any problem with approving this at all, you know, and I think it's about time.
Counsel Lapierre?
Just a point of information for my own self is, I recall we approved one for Mount Vernon Street as well, and I was just wondering if the hours that they're asking for is consistent with what the ordinance we approved in terms of hours. Attorney Lamanna or someone from? I think the three to eight is okay, and I just don't know about the weekend hours, what we stipulated before on that.
I believe Mount Vernon Street had greater hours, I'd defer to Counsel Chakoudas, but I believe they had, they offered breakfast, lunch, and dinner, so this would be different.
So these hours here are in line with the ordinance we passed?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
There's no after-hour permit needed from the licensing.
Also, I want to give one more point of information of this. In Everett is Night Shift Brewers, and they, this is what they do, is allow food trucks to come from one o'clock in the afternoon to actually till midnight. Because in most porn establishments, you have to serve some kind of food, but when it's a brewery, I believe that they're not allowed to open up, and if Mr. Moore could correct me if I'm wrong, open up a food facility within the premises. Am I correct?
Well, this is a brewery, and they have a small area for the public to bid and do some tasting, and that can become part of, hopefully, a significant part perhaps in their business someday. But they need to have food to do such a thing. Getting the food trucks in gives them a variety of menus to select from. They can have different trucks at different times, once they're licensed, of course, by Inspeccional Services. And it gives them an opportunity to bring in some food without changing the nature of the brewery.
Counsel Trahan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'd just like to speak in favor of this. I know Counsel Capano's done a lot of work on it. This is a company that's come into Lynn. They've spent millions of dollars here. They've become very successful. I know they don't have the room to put a food establishment in there because they're trying to grow the business of making the beer, so they do an excellent job down there. Everybody raves about it. And, you know, I'm sure everybody's been down there at one time or the other, but it's, they're in the back, if anybody knows, down on Commercial Street, the old Lynn Lumber. I mean, you probably aren't even going to see the food truck, you know, but it's going to be nice for them. They're going to be able to offer their patrons some food, and you can sit there, have a couple beers, and enjoy whatever there. So I'm very much in favor of it.
Counsel Lozey? Thank you. I want to be consistent, and I'm not at this time ready to be in favor of mobile trucks on our streets. On private property, I would be in favor of that, but not for anything on public roadway. So with that, I would call the vote. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill, absent. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Vicente Fresco for permission to park an oil truck on the property of a home-based business at one-forty-three Alley Street.
All those wishing to speak in favor? Oh, he has a letter?
Yes, I have a letter. The withdrawal was sent up here inadvertently. It should have went to the Board of Appeals, so I'd like to have, I'd like the counsel to accept the letter of withdrawal and also have a refund returned to the petitioner.
I'll second that motion.
That's a follow-up motion, seconded. Discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Eleven? Yes.
Next public hearing.
Next public hearing is a petition, AL Prime Energy Consultants, Inc., Nasser Boussier, for permission for the conversion of an existing gasoline filling station with the storage of flammables to a self-service filling station with the food mat with the sale of wine and beverage, malt beverages.
All those wishing to-
Mr. President, I throw you to the members of the council. I'm Attorney Vitale, and that's the CEO of AL Prime is with me this evening. AL Prime has a station, an existing station in Counsel Capano's Ward on Western Ave. Then this is an existing station in Counsel Walsh's Ward on Boston Street. And the proposal before you is to modernize the station. For those people who grew up in that area, know that area, Al Delcar, for many, many years, ran a gas station there. I think he lived to be in his nineties, but ultimately, he sold the station to AL Prime, and they've operated it without incident, just like they've operated on Western Avenue. And now they want to modernize the station to be competitive with the other self-service gas stations that are in the city. I might add that this isn't adding a station for two reasons. This is an existing station. And secondly, there was a station on the corner of Washington and Boston that no longer is going to be a gas station. I think it's going to be a Popeye's Chicken, so actually, we're not adding a gas station, we're modernizing it. So the reason we're before you is really threefold. The first is that there's a federal statute called LUSP, believe it or not, Leaking Underground Storage Tanks, and they require certain kinds of tanks to be put in. Right now, the existing tanks that are there are thirty thousand gallons. We propose two twenty thousand gallon tanks for a total of forty thousand, and that has significance in this way. It means fewer deliveries. When you're in close proximity to a residential neighborhood, that's something to take into consideration. If you have a forty thousand gallon capacity, you need to bring the fuel trucks in fewer times. We will have to come back before Counsel Walsh's Committee on Minor Licenses to get specific approval from that and the Fire Department for the increase from thirty thousand to forty thousand for the storage of the gasoline. The next reason we're before you is that when Mr. Delcar was there, he had a sort of auto repair in the back with a big building, and the proposal, I think he shows you the existing site, and the plan is to take that down. And they say pictures are worth a thousand words, and so NASA gave me several pictures. One of a facility that's in Salem. There are thirty AL Prime facilities on the North Shore. One in Revere that's very similar to this, in that it also has a food mat and the sale of beer and wine. And a new store that's under construction in Brock. Like most national firms, they do what's called branding. All stations, all McDonald's, all Burger Kings, they all look alike. So you're not going to see much difference in terms of the way each of these stations look, but they're much more improved. They aesthetically are more pleasing, and they serve the public need, as I say, given the fact that a station that was a self-service station had clothes. So we're asking you to do three things. Just as at the other end of Boston Street at Chestnut, there's a Cumberland Farms that sells food, sells gasoline. It's a self-service station. We want to add that element, the food mat. I think I've been before you for Shell Oil, and most of the gas stations that now come before you have that element. People buy lottery tickets, cigarettes, whatever, soda. There's another element here is that through the effort of the council and the mayor, that area of West Lynn is under development with the new Market Basket coming to Federal Street. I believe the city was successful in getting a $2.4 million grant to improve the traffic in the area. Old Neighborhood has been expanding its business in the area, and that's what AL Prime seeks to do, to modernize and expand its service and business in that neighborhood. So the last element is, there was in Counsel Capano's Ward in Markets Square, where there are many beer and wine license, package license. So license that we're talking about would be moved from there to this site. As I indicated, AL Prime is licensed by the state of Massachusetts in Revere. It's licensed by the state of New Hampshire in Merrimack, Pleistow. So they have experience. The hours would be those that we talked with Counsel Walsh about in terms of the self-service gas station, the sale of food, and the sale of beer and wine, all consistent with what the existing regulations would be. We're not asking for any exception to those. The station would be open, not twenty-four hours, it'd be open though seven days a week. I think we could take this board down and show you at least what we think, and it's difficult when you're looking at a one dimension, but you'll see that we're adding some pumps. We're expanding the area for the vehicles. There'd be no impact in terms of parking on the street. And as I say, it's our belief that by modernizing the station, we're serving a legitimate public need, especially given the fact that a similar station has clothes. I'd be glad to answer any questions. NASA's here. This is the layout. I think I provided it to Counsel Walsh. I don't know that all of you saw it, so we brought the blow-up of what we proposed to do. But not unlike the photographs that you got, not unlike the operation on Western Avenue in Lynn that we already have, had been licensed for several years here in the city, not unlike the one that's in Salem or the Revere. And if there are any questions by any council, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Jeff Hooper. I run the business at four hundred Boston Street. It's a next-door neighbor, and I don't see any problem with this. I think it would be an improvement to the general area.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition?
Good evening. My name's Tom Demakis. I'm an attorney in Lynn. I'm representing Old Neighborhood Foods owned by my cousin, Tom Demakis, who can't be here tonight because he's out of town. He's been on Water Hill Street for over a hundred years, that business, and he's seen it grow and develop. And now the Market Basket is coming in. And the Market Basket is going to do something that we all want it to do, which is to attract people to downtown Lynn, to that section of Lynn. However, part of the negative fallout from having the Market Basket go in is that there is going to be a tremendous increase in traffic, notwithstanding the fact that the streets, some of the streets in that neighborhood are being reconfigured. And the traffic threatens to, I don't want to be overly dramatic and say choke the neighborhood, but it's going to be significantly more than it is now. And now Mr. Boussier wants to do a project which is going to further increase the traffic. As it is, he's on an undersized lot to have both a gas station and a convenience store. As it is, traffic sometimes waiting to fill up at his gas station queues out onto the street. So now he wants to have a gas station, he wants to have a convenience store, which he doesn't have room for, and he wants a beer and wine license to attract even more people to the convenience store. So I suggest to you that this is not the time and the place, or this is certainly the time and the place, but it's not the time to give it to him, and he's not in the place to get it. I think that what makes sense here is to see what the impact of the Market Basket is first before we grant permits that are going to further, that could further exacerbate, that logic would tell you would further exacerbate what's going to be a bad problem. I'm not saying he should never get it. I'm saying let's wait and see what the Market Basket does to the neighborhood after it's developed, and then let him come back and see whether or not the neighborhood can tolerate even more traffic from the project that he wants to do. I also want to point out that there are two people in the back. Arthur Rashes, who works at Old Neighborhood, and he's been working there for forty-two years. And Vula Caminos, who owns Jimmy's Roast Beef right there in the same neighborhood, who are also in opposition. They're just going to raise their hands, but they're also in opposition. There's another gentleman here who's going to get up and speak who's in opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Jim Irving, and I own the Lido Cafe, which is right across the street from the place in question. And I have to agree with Mr. Demakis. We have a lot of stuff going on in the neighborhood, as you all know. And if this starts the construction now, I think it would be detrimental for the whole area. I mean, the traffic there is ridiculous now. It's going to get worse when Market Basket comes in. Again, I'm not saying no to the project. I'm just saying let's hold back a little and let Market Basket and the streets get done before he starts his construction. I think it would be the prudent thing to do. I mean, we're jammed down there with cars. You just get down there tonight. There isn't a parking space anywhere. You have the church on the corner, which I believe is licensed for thirty and has over a hundred, five days a week. I'll discuss that with Mr. Walsh eventually. And, I mean, it's just choked down there. You can't move. I mean, you folks know the area. It's very difficult. When you have something going on at the Hibs, and we're busy over here, and now you have the church up here. I would, I have to agree with Old Neighborhood. I think if you just hold it off a little while until you get the bulk of the construction done, then revisit this. I think actually, in the end, it would probably be a good thing for that spot, but timing is everything. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I know, it's just what he, basically what he said about holding on to the whole thing, but really, just remind you one thing, that the person that Attorney Vitale is with, that he's responsible for his own actions. They keep saying Attorney Vitale said. And he is, you know, working with him as an attorney. So please, when you, you know, if you hold back and listen carefully to what these people are saying to you, everybody, the person that is there is the one that is applying for this, not Attorney Vitale.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Remember, he is the attorney. That person is responsible for their own actions. I plead that you remember that, and do not, I just, please ask emphatically, I hear constantly, that Attorney Vitale said. We are talking about the individual who is applying for something, not Attorney Vitale.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If you don't want to get up and speak, you can have a show of hands if you're in opposition. Okay, thank you. Seeing that, no others wishing to get up, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Walsh?
Thank you. I just had, I had a quick question for Counsel Vitale, if you could, please.
Mr. Vitale?
Question? With part of this project, and we've spoken about this project, you're going to remove part of the old building?
That we have that storage facility?
Correct.
It's a twenty thousand square foot lot.
Correct, so that's going to open up a lot of available space. And I've gone by there and seen the traffic currently that line up down Boston Street, and there's a lot of concern with that. But, you know, I've been meeting and speaking about this project and a few of the neighbors over there, and I can see that this is going to be beneficial to what's happening down there. But opening up that lot down there is going to expand a lot more of that area for them to pull over out of the way on Boston Street for filling. I understand filling- Street for filling. I understand filling stations quite a bit, I think, you know, I've been through it a couple of times. But I think this is exciting to be involved with. I'm happy to see it part of the project currently for what's going to happen with the traffic patterns and try to be involved in that. So I thank you for coming here tonight.
So you're making a motion-
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made. Seconded. Discussion. Councilor Gale?
President, just a quick question. Sam, in your discussion, I just got a little, a little lost. Do you meet the current zoning requirements for the parking for filling stations?
Absolutely. The plan that Councilor Walsh has, if you look at this plan, I think there's more than 12, not counting parking at like the six bays, which you can count, which they add the number of parking. There are additional parking spaces for the store. So we, the answer to your question is, yes, we do satisfy. We don't need a variance. The lot is in a business district. A business district, you just need, you got more than five stories, 50 feet of furniture, but you do have to satisfy the parking. Based on the gross number of square feet of the facility, we have adequate parking. And if I just mine as an aside, I represent a lot of gas stations. And you always hear these stories about it'll bring traffic. Let me just tell you something. Shell Oil, Mobil, Cumberland Farms, they don't, it's not like Field of Dreams in Iowa. They don't build the gas station and hope you will come. They have hard facts. This gas station's been there since 1948. Gas stations go where vehicles go, which I think we all agree on. There are vehicles there. There will be more vehicles. That's an opportunity for a business like this to grow. And I would hope that you support Councilor Walsh in his motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Counsel up here.
Attorney Vitale, you mentioned the project, and it's going to be a build from scratch, that back area, from the ground up?
We're going to take the existing buildings down and build a new station.
And what is the projected timetable?
That's-
So you will, in essence, be there and open before the Market Basket?
Absolutely.
We would be there way before Market Basket.
Right, we're hoping. And the other thing is that I would believe that other than lay persons' opinions, whoever got that grant for 2.4 million must have been able to establish traffic patents in the area that justify the state spending that kind of money to make the improvements to serve what we all agree is a need in a changing neighborhood.
And as you would be pulling into these new bays, would, do you feel that that's going to alleviate the park, the traffic down-
Well, there's access from side street. You can, you can access the property. Yeah, why don't you show them?
This is Boston Street.
Yep.
Two driveways. We are pushing everything back. If you see this pump, this is the warehouse right now. It's started. So we're moving everything back. So what happens is when you add more pumps, you're adding more dispensing bases. Doesn't mean that you are adding more volume. It's less queuing. We have-
You're going to have six bays there?
We're going to have six bays, 12 cars.
On each side?
It's going to be-
Twelve cars. Six and six.
Six and six.
Yeah.
12 cars fueling. Right now, we have four cars fueling.
Right.
And what hap, right now, the existing pumps are right here. We are right-
So if you have spillover of, let's say, eight additional cars waiting currently, you would be having the room now under the new proposal?
This is, this dotted line here is the existing warehouse.
Yeah, I know, I see that.
So that's all coming out. And the store will be all the way back, please the variance, and everything's coming in.
But looking at the traffic itself, if there is an A-car backup trying to get currently onto your pumps, there's only four available. This would alleviate somewhat of eight cars additionally.
Queuing up.
Because you will have 12 capacity.
Right.
So 13 cars would cause a buildup, but not 12.
Yes.
And then there'd be additional 12 cars to park to go into the convenience store.
To the store.
Gotcha.
Councilor Gale?
Thank you. Currently, is your pumping station self-serve, or is it manned by someone? And what is this new configuration? Will it be self-serve, or will it also be attendant served?
Currently, there are two pumps with the full serve. We're going to self-serve.
All self-
Going to self-serve, yes.
All self-
Does that take longer, in terms of-
Takes much faster.
Yeah, it's faster.
There's no need for a guy to come out there. You just, you pay at the pump and you leave. You don't need anything in the store. You just put your credit card, pump and go.
There's a city ordinance, as we all know, that requires free air in the city of Lynn, and some folks don't abide by it. No, you have to go and you have to actually ask for them to turn the pumps on for free, but they have a coin operation on the outside. Were you providing such services as well?
We have free air and we have gauging. If you need to gauge on this, you pay for it. But we always provide free air, yes. We have it in all our places, Summer Street, Western Ave, and-
Yeah, so there are two other locations in Lynn you can go look at. And they are more modern than this location.
And window washing? I hate it when I can't get window washing, so.
The squeegee, yeah.
You can have squeegees?
We have a free cow wash.
What about oil change?
Jenny wants a cow wash.
What about oil change?
Councilor Walsh?
I, I just want to say, just, you know, going forward here, I've had a pretty good relationship with Mr. NASA, and he's been very good to the neighbors that have been abiding the property. I've spoken to the majority of them. Anytime there was a concern, one of the neighbors had a concern with some of the trees that were growing, he was down there the next day to take care of it. I think he's, you know, going to be a good neighbor here. He's always been a good neighbor. He's got a few businesses in the city here that he operates, filling stations, and I don't get a lot of complaints from him. So I think this is going to be a good thing. We're going to take an old gas station down there. We're going to bring it up to the standards of today. We're going to put it in and make it fit in with the new project that we just, you know, spoke to Jim Cottell about in EDIC in the other room a little while ago, and how this was exciting for that area. And I think that just leave this gas station the way it is wouldn't be a good option at all. And I think this is a great thing, and I'd ask to call for the vote.
Okay, motions been made. Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Apia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Abstain.
Abstain. Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. 10 yes.
Thank you.
And the last petition is petition of Comcast Robert Oliveria for permission to intercept existing conduit on Market Street and place a new four-by-four manhole. From the new manhole, place one four-inch PVC communication conduit 185 feet plus and minus in a northeasterly direction to the rear building at 325 Broad Street to provide service to 200 Market Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Chakoudas?
Since no one's here to speak regards to this, I'd like to table it.
Motion's been made to table. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Counsel Gale, would you like to take the voting?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Seer. If there's no objection, we're going to take some folks out of order. We have some great people here from, from the program Roka, who've been very patient sitting in the back. And they're going to give a quick little presentation. We have Emily Fish here, who's the director of the Lynn site, as well as Scoff Schaffenberger. And we'd like to have you come up and give a presentation on some of the good things that Roka is doing in the city of Lynn. Boris, please. Scott's going to lead you up for the wolves.
Oh, no, actually. Spare, spare you the PowerPoint. I think we're going to pass out some materials. You don't really need to look through them right now, but they're available for you to access when you're ready. I'm Emily Fish. I'm the assistant director here at our Lynn site. We're located at 52 Andrews Street. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm very excited to talk to you about Roka and the things that we're trying to do with some of your young people in the city of Lynn. For those of you who don't know us, we're a nonprofit that started in Chelsea, and we just opened up this new location in May of this year, 2016, here in Lynn, so that we were more able to serve more young people. We're a cognitive behavioral intervention model, and our main mission is to disrupt cycles of poverty and incarceration. We work with the highest-risk young men in the population that are ages 17 to 24. So that means that they usually have street or gang involvement, that they've had juvenile or adult incarceration time, that they have a history of arrests and convictions, that they are engaged in drug use, and that they don't have a history of employment, or often don't have their diploma or GED. So we're really targeting young people who are not ready, willing, or able to do programs. And our theory of change is basically that if you engage young people in strong, positive relationships, that we can change behaviors and that we can help young people gain life skills, employment skills, and educational skills. So we basically have four, just, I'm going to try and be very quick, but we have four pillars to our model. And they're relentless outreach, transformational relationships, stage-based programming, and engaged institutions. So very quick descriptions of each of those is, we believe that you can't push behavior change without building a relationship with young people first. So we try and build what we call transformational relationships. And that's a deep and honest relationship with young people that meet them where they're at, at the time that they're at. And we do this through relentless outreach. And relentless outreach means that I'm not expecting young people to show up at the Roka door every morning. If they're able to do that, they're not our young person. They're not as high-risk as they say they are. So that means our youth workers go out into the community, and they meet young people where they're at. So they go to their homes, they go to parks, they go to probation, they go to where their friends live. They go out sometimes on outreach till 10:00 PM at night to see where young people are and what they're doing. And they just keep showing up over and over and over and over again with great consistency, so that, that trust and that relationship gets built with the young people. And as we're doing this, we're pushing stage-based programming, which is one of the, this is the third pillar of the model. And stage-based programming basically means that when young people aren't quite ready, willing, and able to show up for themselves, we're not expecting them to, to be able to do coursework. We say, come in, take class at your own pace. And as we get to know them and we build that relationship, we're going to move them through stages of change and get them to a place where they're doing more structured, more advanced coursework, and increasing accountability levels and pushing behavior change more. So as we're getting to know them and building the relationship, the actual coursework or curriculum that we're asking them to engage in changes. So they go from doing drop-ins, and then they go to like doing advanced culinary courses and getting their serve safe, or, and then, and then what we really want them to do is be in this program that we call Transitional Employment Program. We call it TEP. And that's a subsidized employment program where they show up to Roka every day, they get paid minimum wage with the opportunity for a raise, and they go out with a Roka crew supervisor, and they go into the community, and they do things like landscaping, snow removal, painting, apartment turnovers, any types of contracts we can get with the community where young people can go out and learn how to show up to work. And because when they start with us, they don't know how to work. Young people don't know how to work. So the idea is that they can fail in safety with us, and we can teach them job skills and life skills at the same time. And then the last cornerstone of the model is engaged institutions. And that kind of means that we can't do this work alone. We need the help of community partners, whether that be the police. We have a good relationship with Lynn PD, with the chief, and with Lieutenant Holy, who we meet with every week to kind of go over who's at risk in the community right now. Or if that means probation, working with probation to help young people, you know, do the things that they're stipulated to. It means working with council members like yourselves to try and get engaged with what you guys feel young people need in the community. So we can't do the work alone, and so we rely on our partnerships with other community providers, government representatives, and probation and other institutions like that. So that's kind of the general layout of the model. I don't want to go into too much detail, but if you do look at this one pager that I handed out, I did want to show you that part of what makes Roka different is that we are accountable to you, and we are accountable to our young people. We basically track everything that we do. That way, we can not only see how the young people are progressing, but so that we can actually evaluate our practices and evaluate our program. So we generally say, like, we have an annual retention rate of 76%. That 87% of our young people don't get new arrests within a year. But I did want to show you, this data is Lynn-specific. So since we started in June, we had 48 young people that we were serving. Now, we have 72 young people that we're serving. We are going to go up to 85 young people that we're serving. And you'll see that if you go down to the lower area, for young people who've been enrolled in our program for more than 24 months, and there are some young people we've been working in the city of Lynn before we actually opened the building, you'll see that there's, you know, 82% of them have jobs outside of Roka, 91% of them have no new charges, and 100% of them have, have not been incarcerated. So I just did want to show you that. And you can also see in the bottom kind of where we're getting our referrals. Most of them are from the police and from probation. We also have race and ethnicity there, our age range, and kind of the areas of Lynn and the surrounding area that are represented in our young people. So I obviously invite any questions right now, but I also invite any questions moving forward. I'm always around to answer any questions or concerns you might have about the program, our staff, or our young people. I do really want to emphasize, we feel accountable to you, to the larger Lynn community, and to our young people, to make sure that we're doing work that actually benefits the wider community and our partners. And you're obviously welcome to come to the building at 52 Andrews Street anytime. We are open five days a week, usually like 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And we hope that by kind of coming here and doing an introduction, that we can deepen our relationship with the council and with the engaged institutions in the city of Lynn. And we're really excited about continuing our work here and growing and serving more young people. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Any questions? Counsel Capano?
Yeah. Oh, thank you for the work that you do in the city. I mean, this, this is great stuff. It's needed, and, you know, looks like you do it well. The only question I have is, there are other groups in the city also, and I was wondering how much collaboration, like specifically Lysola. I don't know if you're familiar with them, or if you work with them, and how is this different? And what I hate to see is competition sometimes between some of the groups that are doing similar work rather than collaboration, where, you know, and, so I was just wondering how, how that works, how that works.
That's a, that's a great question. And again, like, this, this goes again to our, our true belief and partnership that we alone can't serve young people. Lysola, Antonio and Teresa are actually very much incorporated to the work we're doing in Roka. Antonio comes to our building every morning to help us open for the Transitional Employment Program. He's part of that meeting that we have with the Lynn Police on Monday. He just went on outreach with one of our youth workers last night. So he is technically our community liaison for one of the grants that we're working, the SSYI Grant. I don't know if anyone's heard of that, Safe and Successful Youth Initiative. So he's very wrapped into what we're doing. The same goes, I know, some of you may be familiar with Straight Ahead. They also come to that outreach meeting, and we're also working with Catholic charities who has a youth worker who's working with females. So we're referring her, like, some of the girlfriends or sisters of the young men that we're working with. So definitely we are not in competition with any of the other people trying to serve our young men and women. If anything, working together kind of helps us all do the work at a greater level. If you were asking kind of what makes us different, I would say probably that I guess we're newer to the community is one of the difference, that we're an outcome-driven model, and that I think that we're offering kind of through our Transitional Employment Program, that it runs all year round, and that there's opportunity to grow that in a way that maybe some of the organizations haven't been able to do in the past.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions from the counselors? Jeffrey? Any other questions from the, actually, you know what, I would actually ask, I would like to ask you a few questions.
Okay.
So Roka does a phenomenal job. As Counsel Capano pointed out, you take the highest risk of highest-risk folks in our community. And you're a real organization in the sense that you're, my understanding is you're about a $12 million organization a year, correct?
Yes. And so that's not just from grants that we have in Lynn, but we have a lot of, we're doing a social impact bond, which is called Pay for Success. So there's a lot of different ways that we're getting funding.
And can you go ahead and talk about some of the, some of the young men that you take? You know, the, give me like a 60-day-out synopsis, something, a typical applicant, and how many times you give that person a chance?
So when we get a referral, it's usually just a name and an address, and sometimes a picture. We go out into the community and we start to look for them. Usually, the address is wrong, so we start to ask around to other young people. Have you seen this person? We go to probation. We say, is this person on probation? When's his next check-in? So we're doing that relentless outreach piece. It usually takes about zero to 60 days for us to determine- It usually takes about zero to 60 days for us to determine if the young person is high-risk enough for us. So like I said, if the young person's not high-risk enough, we're gonna say, here, this is a different program that we think would suit you better.
What do you mean by high-risk?
So high-risk would be they're street and gang involved or affiliated, they have a history of convictions and arrests, they have a history of incarceration and probation, that they're actively engaged in drug use, that they are not employed and have no history of employment, and that they don't have their HISA or their GED. So a lot of different, like, elements of need and engaging in very high-risk behaviors. So it's an intervention model, not a prevention model. And then, so, and then once we find the young person, they're often in pre-contemplation, which means they're not, they're not interested, they're happy with their lives, they don't see the need to change, so that would mean showing up over and over again. So it usually takes between that 60 days and maybe even up to five months to really build that relationship with them. And then I would say that they're coming in for a little bit of programming during that time. And then we bring them into TEP, because they say, okay, fine, you want me to give up the streets? Then give me a job. There is no change without jobs, right? So we give them a job, and for our young people to complete 60 days of work in a row, it can take them up to 15 months, because they do not know how to work and they do not know how to show up. So we're terminating them, rehiring them, terminating them, rehiring them. So they see, these are the types of things you'd really be terminated for at a job. If you show up late, if you come high, if you disrespect a staff member, if you have a weapon on you, all of those things. And then usually, we always say to partners, relapse happens. We don't get young people and then we fix all their problems and they're perfect. They're gonna relapse behaviorally, whether that's literally substance abuse, mental health, just going back to the streets, disappearing for a while. So they'll relapse, and then we pull them back in because we leverage the relationship that we built with them. And then I would say probably at two years is when we want to see them in a job, working, no new arrests, off probation, because we're a four-year model. We don't, we know change doesn't happen overnight, so we provide four years of services for young people. Is that kind of what you were getting at with the...
Yes, and also just what are the type of positions you're looking for? You know, if partnering with the city, what are the types of jobs that are helping your program?
There's a couple of things. One would be contracts for our Transitional Employment Program, which is, like I said, things like landscaping, painting, apartment turnovers, working in parks, snow removal, things like that. And then as young men are getting ready to work outside of ROKA, they do a lot of things in obviously quarry-friendly industries, so that means culinary arts, working in kitchens, custodial work, things like building maintenance and, like, carpentry work. And so I would say things probably in that realm. We've also had young people do landscaping, manual labor work. We've even had young people working for cities, like in departments of public works and things like that.
Okay. And Councilor up here.
Just a quick question. Is the program limited to just men, or are there women involved as well?
As of now, it is only men. So we're referring women to Catholic Charities North that has some people who work with women, so as of now, just men.
Thank you. Councilor Nett?
Mr. President, I know ROKA campus, they provide ESL classes at night to adults, so are you planning to do that as well here?
Offer classes at night to adults. So our age cap is 24, so it's kind of young adults. Obviously, the exception is we offer the four years, so if you come to us at 24, you're really gonna get services to 28. And we do offer programming into the nighttime. Our building closes at 8:00. But in terms of, you would have to be on a caseload to kind of come in to do classes. It's not really open to the general public. Also, that has to do similarly to the high-risk young people we're working with. We don't want to necessarily, you know, mix them with just about anybody. So, yeah, so if it's in that age range and they're on a caseload, then yes, nighttime works. With a lot of people, if they did have a job in the daytime, we wouldn't want to take them away from that.
Councilor Capano?
I was just wondering if there were job training opportunities, and if not, that may be something that some of us may be able to help with, if that could be a possibility for some of the, some of the clients.
So currently, we're doing that, but we're actually having to access that through our Chelsea site, so we bring Lynn, young men from Lynn to Chelsea. We offer, like I said, advanced culinary workshops, then they get serve-safe certified, OSHA forklift trainings, custodial BECO certifications, and some carpentry trainings. But eventually, yes, we would be looking to do, offer those services in, within the city of Lynn. And so, yeah, partnering around that is definitely something we're looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
And I believe just for Councilor's indication that we are in the process of scheduling a meeting with the folks of ROKA and some of the city departments, I believe for November 15th. So we encourage folks, if you want to show up for that, we'll have, what Terry sent out the information. If we get more of a quorum, then we'll make it a public meeting, but if we have less than the quorum, it might be good.
Mr. President.
Jeffrey? Jeffrey, please, we have to have the quorum. Councilor Barton?
I recommend to all, Jeffrey...
We have rusty rifles. I'm going home. You're not gonna start about kids with weapons when we have kids in high school with rusty rifles and no one knows what's due yet. You're not gonna blame just kids in the street when we have them in high schools too and no one has an answer.
Jeffrey?
Good night and God love you all and God bless you.
I bless you too.
They're formative year kids, and we need to find services that are going to help them with social work.
That's what we're trying to do.
There's a lot of help and good folk here.
Councilor Barton?
Good night, and I know all of you do. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. Councilor Barton?
Thank you. I recommend to all the councilors, not only go to the one on Andrews Street, but also go over to Chelsea and look at that facility they have over there. It's unbelievable.
Yes, absolutely. If you'd like to visit Chelsea, if you'd like to visit Lynn, I can definitely help arrange that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. We'll be in touch, and we appreciate the good work you do for the state of Lynn.
Thank you so much for having me. If anybody wants my direct contact information...
Yeah, why don't you pass it out to all the councils? I think they'd all like that. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
And Scott, big enough job.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we're on to committee reports, I think.
We have one petition to set down. Petition of Los Chamos Cuisine Manual Randozi for permission for assigned permit at 227 Union.
Motion to set it down. All those papers say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Aye.
Okay, committee reports, ways and means. First order, order that the city of Lynn award YMCA Metro North, the YMCA, the RFP, for the sale of a portion of Neptun Boulevard and the Traffic Island on the other side of Neptun Boulevard, collectively known as the land, and shall convey the land to the YMCA for nominal consideration of $1, having determined that the YMCA's proposal advances other significant public goals and the public purposes and enhances the property and surrounding neighborhood. The conveyance shall be on the condition that the YMCA agrees in writing that if it has not obtained a building permit and broken ground for new YMCA, by the third anniversary of the recording of the deed for the land, the YMCA shall reconvey the land to the city of Lynn for the same price of $1. Further order that, or order that may be authorized to execute a purchase and sale agreement, a deed, a development agreement, any agreements with regards to payments in lieu of taxes and all other necessary documents to effectuate this order. Further order that the city solicitor's office draft the necessary documents in order to effectuate this order. The prior Lynn City Council order dated October 24, 2016 regarding the sale of this property is hereby repealed. Do you want to do them all together, or...
Any objections to do them all together? No objection, all together.
Next order is order that the city comptroller take the following actions. Transfer the sum of $50,000.0 from the parking meter receipts expense account to the parking expense account. Certify as an available fund the amount of $167,287.0 as allotted to the city of Lynn Fire Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the fiscal year 2017 State 911 Support and Incentive Program. Certify as an available fund the amount of $405,828.0 as allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the 180 Title III Carryover Grant. Transfer the sum of $50,075.0 from the reserve account to the ISD account. And they requested emergency...
Councilor Nett?
I'll unanimous vote of the committee. I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded and discussed. Seeing on roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seah?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey? Absent, Councilor Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan? Absent, Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, nine yes.
And was there emergency on that, Councilor Nett?
There was emergency on that.
Motion for the emergency and seconded. Roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seah?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey? Absent, Councilor Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan? Absent, Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, nine yes.
Okay, next committee report.
Licensing?
How'd that go?
Excellent. unanimous vote of committee.
Motion to approve. All those papers say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it.
And the economic and workforce development...
Yes, vote of the committee to accept the report.
Motion made to accept and seconded by Councilor Lapia, the second. And you, discussion, seeing none. All those papers say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it. New business? New business? Councilor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to set down a public hearing to further amend the zoning ordinance as follows. Section 411, change apartment house from P to SP in the R3 and R4 districts.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those papers say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it. Any other new business? We'd just like to point out, not to prolong this, but Madam Clerk has done a very wonderful job, as has the early election folks downstairs. We're proud to say that today alone, early voting, there was 1,012 people who voted. We're up to a total of 4,567 early votes in the city of Lynn, and at 7:00 PM in City Hall, many of you saw a line, there was 151 people in line as of 7:00 o'clock, and folks waited one hour in line to vote early. So, that being said, tremendous work by the elections office. Clearly, the path forward in early election requires more staffing. That being said, thank you very much for your good work. Early voting is still open until November 4th.
Did we give her a round of applause?
It is important to note that her and us...
Staff, they should get the round of applause. They've been working 12-hour days.
12-hour days, folks, so we appreciate it very much. Continue to early vote down the Lynn Museum and Lynn City Hall. Go to our website to check out the hours. Councilor Calucci?
Adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn. All those papers say aye, opposed, no, the ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Good job, all men.